That's the second topic for style township interaction between the goals and objectives. Uh but before we jump into that item, I want to know if there's a non-arranged participation. You don't see anybody in the room. Is there anyone online, Josh? You know, Ed and you. Right in us, no? That's just that. Ed, do you have any further comments or decisions? We're not.
Yeah. This was a good call this afternoon on how we're going. Um and he asked about if this would be on the agenda next time we're going to the U K. And that um uh work session, um I don't know if he's been through it. Right there at the point, and so you may come in and travel through um.
I'm recording, so I'll be good.
He may have, he may have questions, but we'll deal with one of them.
The problem is that you're working there. So where do we want to be here? Well, but the record is what's up. There's no non-arranged participation right now.
So I think um yeah, so I it just uh, you know, I've I've been sitting on the meeting with seven, I've heard the. You know, he was saying a hundred, but um kind of we left off that last call to meeting uh the kind of standard. They bring back a um work session uh to talk about um. Providing the committee with, you know, goals and objectives um to pay back to. To set to the group of township. Um and so uh Michelle uh put together an all and um. He added in some uh kind of supplemental information that he received from. From Sia Township that uh currently their their group had presented to their board. Um and then we wanted to kind of offer the last thing for the discussion for. Um the Fraser meeting and. Uh let me just go where we're focusing, they should.
And the first question I guess I would have. And I probably have been the one. That maybe it sounded most. Critical of. Of not having goals down. I appreciate having some of you down, but. Um what's the phrase we use in here? We say there isn't sufficient information in order to evaluate it fully or.
As proposed.
As proposed.
That's the key.
Okay, so. I would like to know what would we like to have the advocate provide that would help. And 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 I maybe that's not a fair question. Maybe nobody else wants to know that. I mean, I mean, if if this is, if we're at the point where we don't think this is something we want to do. Then we should tell them that we should just well know on the association, but I'm I'm. Not sure that I've heard a conclusion. Yeah, right.
We haven't drawn a conclusion.
Haven't drawn a conclusion, right? So if if but if we if we know we're not, if if there are things that are missing. We should ask the advocate for that, if they'd be willing to provide that.
Right, and that's exactly.
Like, for example, take the well information. Just take the well time. That's one goal is, and you'll call it well, I think. But like, I think we all can agree would be a potential benefit, the opportunity to find another water source. And that, I agree.
Yeah.
So I. So, you know, what would we need to to better understand whether that was a viable benefit? What we want the advocate to tell us.
What I like. I think for me, that is actually the premise of this, and I don't know what. You two who have been on meetings with us would say, but any direction we have talked about. Or any potential direction we talked about, I would say. Like, that's the biggest benefit I see to City of Dexter. And so in terms of what that looks like for the developer. I mean, how how? I don't know, like, how does he prove we're not, or did prove, okay, Dan can fill this in, but like, prove we're just. Just that that is viable, because until we know yes or no. I don't really. See that more personally, I mean.
He would have to go on the tech, like, he'd have to find the water, and he'd have to put a, I don't know, he has thirty six hours, seventy hours, that's kind of wild. With a broad amount, I mean, every well, we had more than one well, just uh. If they don't, they didn't, they never even get it. They won't ask us to go. I'm going to tell you that.
Well, because first, the conversation we had was that at one point in YouTube, some of the show, and. Uh only interact with him was. He had tried getting a well to perk, and it didn't perk, but that's separate from what we're talking.
That's true.
Yeah.
Or a, or a perfectly per subject, but. I don't know if they said anything about any wells.
No, they never, it starts, I recall from our conversation, but it's not something that was ever looked into, right? Yeah, that was their their thought, I'm setting a well there, but I don't think any study has been done to see if there is. Unless we have seen anything, you have seen anything, I don't think we have ever seen anything that there is a study.
We we haven't. One of the, one of the questions is our additional installation that. Would seem logical to ask the developers, since he's got three pieces out there in his proposal. Um and he has said he's open to discussing um this well. Where is he thinking that would be um forty five acres, its proposed renovation? Is it to be looked at in an open space, or is it to be on the many hands? It's it's. Someone's a little tricky in the A, but it's that's, that's a conversation. That needs to definitely happen between the city and the after him. You know, definitely. For you. But I think some of the other has to have so really to be examined further. Before you begin to. Which uh so, so let's start off with the additional helping action we captured. I mean, um that's something that's been really, and what, please need to figure out the spark as. If you're looking at market rate housing, you've got certainly some units, I think we're able to do all that um and provide that information. Um. Does, does that assumption of market rate housing need the means? That council sees for housing, if not, what are the kinds of housing that you want to see? Again, this is a dialogue. With the applicant as well as people on the entire country.
So um in having the discussion with Sia. Um. Part of what they asked is they said exactly what you said, you just don't, do you want to do this or not? And I think, you know, we indicated that it's possible, yeah, we can get there, it's the benefits that we're gonna have with it. So. The reason why I think, as proposed. The proposal isn't where it used to be. It's very bad, right? I mean, it's it's a series of. Uh lots, but there's, I mean, if that was a subdivision or a P U D plan that we had that came in, it would be much more extensive. And what that is there. A lot of the proposed benefits were. Not guarantees, right? They were they were possible things, so. The. And the other part is. We still don't know what's gonna happen with the rest of the land, if that's happening. On that land, except there. I mean, if we say, yeah, access that land, and what's the key thing for saying, okay, now I want to manage this thing? We go through the same thing again and again, again, and we keep on coming back around, because, you know, whatever things that you guys planned for the, those other things, they're not there. I mean. There have have been people that have expressed doubt that many hands may even be viable or be able to get to pulling that project out. So if they can, then what? You know, if Sia Township says, yeah, we don't want to preserve that land, we're not gonna pay for it, then what? You know, so. I think the very first thing, I mean, I, you know, I kind of had my four or five things that I think are important, and if it was me making the decision, what I would ask. The the number zero, the one before anything else is, he needs to plan for the entirety of it. And he needs buy-in from Sia on those other areas. He, I mean, if many hands is gonna end up being something that's there. But that may not come to fruition, as long as that's buffer, unless we know what's gonna happen on the land between us and many hands, then I'm okay with that. As long as what happened to Dexter and what affects Dexter. But the thing is, is that I feel like the information that's been submitted. Has a lot of possibilities, but no, no commitments, no guarantees, no financing that come along with it. Um. I mean, so some of the key things, assuming that he can come to some type of agreement with Sia Township on how he's gonna develop that that land. Then the first thing is, we can't have any stubs coming off of that ground. Right now, there's one stub that comes off of there, that needs to be closed off, it needs to just be a loop so that we forever and always get rid of the, I mean, the side person knocking down houses, putting in a road. Um but forever and always, we're gonna stop additional traffic that can cut through Baker um to Dexter and on the deal. I I think with the residents at Dexter Crossing, and maybe some of you have talked to others that don't have this feeling, but the ones I've talked to said, we're worried about the traffic that's gonna come through. I think having a smaller development would be a positive, because if it was a much larger development, there'd be that much more traffic, so a smaller development would just be like another King Glass. Um. Second.
So smaller. Smaller relative to his, but.
No, no, one minute, if it was eighty houses, I would be okay with that.
Yeah. Um. Can you stay, can you stay on the the road orientation for a second?
Yes.
So on the last page of the package is a map. For the layout.
Okay.
Right? You guys, I assume you understand, looked at that or talked about it, or at least seen it?
The layout that we submitted for the.
Page twenty nine, okay.
Well, it's part, part of the really, with the application that is. You know, that's not even with that with Sia.
No, yeah, okay, well, from from my perspective on that. I agree, I would, one of the things I would ask him to do is get rid of the stuff. Now, he may say, well, those are intended to be pathways into the future nature. I would say that could be accomplished. Without a roadway there, okay, without ending the roadway, and I would ask, I would ask you to put the natural areas in around the property as a conservation use best. That can't be crossed. And I would think, what I would think away, any concern about it, we're going back to, we can't, I think, just because he's showing lots, not going all the way to the property. There's open buffer space all over. And I'm not, my, my, my primary goal. Of this would be, I do, I do think housing is the primary goal for me. But then adding houses is a good thing, and I need to do that. When adding people here and providing opportunities is a good thing. Ending the discussion on where those stones go. Isn't the point? I'm not convinced, I would like to have, the well is the third priority. While I I would like to get one. I'm pretty sure we can handle another eighty homes.
And the second thing, it was the pregnant.
For me, for me, for me is is taking away the uncertainty in where the two existing stones. Go, go, and to me, the way to do that is just require him to put a conservation in all the way around. The the platted parcels that were shown rectangles there, instead of letting them extend to the edge of the property.
So. Again, adding eighty homes, I don't, I think you're right, we could take that promise to irrigation, that's the biggest, that's the reason that we got this. Put in place.
Right.
You know, the the restrictions. Because of irrigations. I'm just, I'm just saying, I I don't like, I think eighty, we can do that, but there are these now.
I'll open that and agree with you that, yeah, eighty we can handle, but we keep talking about. All of the other developments we have in the pipeline, and so then we get back to the capacity study, which we don't have yet. And so then it becomes, and that comes back and says, and and it says, we can only handle X amount of homes. Which is gonna be more than eighty. And we're gonna put our priorities in terms of the padding. This is, I mean, I don't have a opinion on.
So I mean, the the best of both worlds would be you add the eighty homes and try to go up, and it increases your capacity.
But I guess that's why the actual.
So so, I mean, I realize you want, that's why I brought the well first, is the first thing, I mean, if if we're uncertain about the well, I mean. What do we want him to do to prove whether that's better? Maybe, maybe if you can get proof that there's water rushing in it. We're not interested.
Well, that's what I'm saying, sorry to, I'm not trying to, but like you saying what you just said, which is that the well was priority three for you. What you, like, previous, what you just said now, though, is why the well's priority one for me, if that makes sense.
I mean, you want to know what's there.
Yeah, because if it's there, then sure, eighty homes isn't gonna do anything, because it's expanding.
And why, I'm, I'm purpose steering, I think we should be going back to him, to give him, and say, hey. These are the things we need, that are fully, well, that are obvious.
Well.
Enough rust leaves.
Your food down on this too.
Sure, sure, I'm sure, that's what, I don't, we need water, right? There there's no question.
And for me, my, the priorities are mayor, and like, that, I, I think that's number two. You know, to be honest, but we do need water.
So what's number one for you?
I think that what this development looks like, and what it's gonna provide to the city, is right up there.
In terms of housing?
Yeah, in terms of housing, and then what are we looking at? What's their demand in the room? What's it costing to me? To, to the city with waters, or DPW, roads, you know, and I don't know how we, I mean, that's a pretty big, a pretty big bubble. But is it big enough to sustain what we're, what we're gonna add into the city?
One thing I would like to see to discuss development in the city is more generally. Um back in June, I reached out to Justin and Marie to talk about. Essentially, how soon are we gonna run up against a capital level property tax rate? Without bringing in additional development, like, if nothing changes, how how soon are we moving some threshold? If that's even a sensible way to think about it, and Marie did get back to me and shared a spreadsheet. And I think we even talked about it, and she and I on the phone, and it was included, I think, in supplement, maybe in a packet. But I don't think that was very detailed conversation, and for me personally, it would help, I think, for all council to. For Marie to look at the presentation and walk us through that, if they think, often we hear the argument, you know. We need this for property tax revenue, I just, I just need to see more specifics to understand that, right? Think what Marie has already prepared, likely addressed in that question, I just need help. Walking through it, I figure, I do, other people might, um.
So that's just, I'd like to talk to see that.
I think I will also say that, you know, what I hear a lot about is people can't find a home. They can't find their homes, they want to live in the area, they can't find a house. So that, that, that's the basis for why I listed, um, that, right, I hear that, I hear that a lot. When I hear market rate. Or instead of thinking, or, you know, worry about, what is, what value is that, you know, what kind of cost? And so that comes back to whether they're proposing to build. You know, if we're gonna build something small, it's a bit less than something bigger.
Correct.
Okay, relative to what we have. So I I don't know that the size is. What we propose, I don't know, what what part of the market he's aiming for. Okay, now, I I know that I've heard say, he wants to get, you know, some return on investment for his investment in the property. Well, there's certain. Eighty times something, it's gonna generate revenue, it's been helping to group back, but I don't know what market rate that. I don't really drive it. And I also don't know what the average lot size is, unless I just read it on here, is it on here somewhere, what the, uh, transit?
I think the numbers are not giving me why.
It is, I think, on second page of the, but there. Overall, forty or forty five acres, these things. I know, there's a lot of open space, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So and and we we did run um the numbers as far as, you know, what our general fund bill would would capture. And um, you know, just kind of taking, it activated seventy single family residential homes at a value of five hundred thousand. It'd be about a hundred and nineteen thousand to the general fund um in revenue. And at uh seventy homes at like six hundred thousand dollars, it'd be about two hundred and twenty thousand.
So on the whole?
Sorry, seventy homes at what?
So s- seventy homes at about five hundred thousand would be about a hundred and nineteen thousand in in everything in the general fund. Um so that isn't roads uh where, and then the DDA isn't, isn't applicable. Um but uh, um seventy at six hundred thousand is about two hundred and twenty thousand in in just general fund revenue.
This is the thing that. I'm gonna speak out of turn, but this is the thing that really. It gets me, right? Like, yes, we need more housing, and yes, we need additional revenue to cover some of the increasing. Expenses we have with fire, police, and all these other things, like, I don't, I'm not discounting that. But I also, like, don't know how to say, okay, let's, people can't find a home here, let's add five hundred and six hundred thousand dollar homes. Like, there are people who want to be here, who are from here, who can't afford that. And so I think that has to be a part of this discussion as well, is that the housing we need? And it's not necessarily isolated to this one property. But as we look at all of the properties that we have for development or redevelopment, real extension. You have to discount the fact that, like, there has to be a balance, at least for me, there has to be a balance.
So if I could, when I use the general market, I don't have any specific, I don't have, even though I know, we do my things in the plus, that we use for meetings. When I see market, and I'm talking about a hundred and twenty percent or more of average median income for us, not that. Eighty to hundred and twenty percent is what is considered payable. Um the thirty to sixty is the general affordability, the zero to thirty is the very low, very low.
Right, and I'm not saying we need, you know, I'm not saying we need balance of all of that, but it gets back to what I said. A million times for these meetings, if I hadn't bought my house six months. You know, if I tried to buy it six months later. I, some of whom grew up in West, Western Washington County, would have not been able to buy my house, and so there is. It's not about affordable housing necessarily, although I I'm an advocate for that, it's. Let me get the people who have been here forever to be able to stay here.
That ancient play.
Right.
So this is what, in fact, is Sean's point, what additional information? He's proposing a single family home. Do you want to provide a mixture, duplexes, triplexes, quads? As opposed to just, what do you think?
I mean, I personally would.
And they don't, you just.
No, 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 I know, but, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing that, the proposal he brought before us earlier with the six hundred or whatever. Hundreds of units. That's, i- in terms of. Reserving what we have here in in the city slash former village, I'm not looking for that, I'm just looking for opportunities for people who. Want to stay here, to be able to stay here, so.
So then, first, it's, and we go with the math, and I don't need to interrupt any of the rest of them. So you're sho- he's showing what, seventy or eighty lots? So just the mathematical exercise, if you did a duplex, in each of those, you're now looking at a hundred and forty units. Is a hundred and forty new dwelling units? Too much density? If not, maybe whether you took twenty of those lots, and you wanted those to be triplexes or quads. If you understand where I'm going, it's the mathematical exercise to figure out what density feels comfortable for you.
Well, not to keep, I'm sorry that I keep talking or, but like, it's kind of like. Dexter Crossing and Victoria Condos, right? Like. Is there some sort of line of that that can go in there? That, I was gonna say, it's not just that, it's what material you're using on instructions, like you look at grandy commons, that's very high end. Right. They're expensive. Right, my other thing, though, is like, it's not just about density and affordability of people being able to live here, I am also a huge proponent for. Land preservation, and I would like to see a lot of that preserved, and so I'm not saying I want to move out of. The acreage that we're looking at now, but. It will, anyway, I'll stop talking.
And and so I, the numbers that I provided were just out of the air.
Sure, no, yeah.
Those were numbers that 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 they.
Quite not unreasonable, like, yeah.
Prices.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring up a couple, maybe just one um. Presupposition, I guess, that I'm hearing in these comments about housing, we are housing, and like, we need to accommodate everybody who wants to live here. I mean, the reality is, I, we know that there, there's fixed amount of land here. Fixed amount of water that we have, that we know of right now. And so I just want us to consider, is it a reasonable goal to think that? Three generations of every Dexter family should be able to live here, we're hearing, oh. Parents, you know, parents of adult children, want their children to live here, and they want to raise family here, and we also want the teachers who work here to live here, we want people who live in the business park to live here, we want. I mean, if you add it up, that number of people, I mean. They can't fit, um, so I appreciate, like, the general goal behind it, but I also think we need to question, like, the actual practical reality of. That there are space constraints, and. You can't, I just don't think it's reasonable a thing, for example, three generations of the young, if they want. Can all of Dexter, if everybody wanted, there would be no, I mean, I haven't done the math, but how many, how are you packing these people in? Um.
Yeah, I don't think we're solving that.
So, right, I mean, I like that idea, but again, it's, I don't think it's achievable, I don't think it's real estate. No, and also to the point about cost of construction and affordability, um. Hilltop View Apartment. You know, it's maybe not anybody's favorite topic here, when that project came through, preliminary site plan, it's twenty four units, says right here. On air site plan document. Cost of construction, ten million dollars. Ten million dollars. To buy twenty four units. Four hundred sixteen thousand dollars per unit. If that's what you have in mind when you think about affordable permanent form of housing. There is a cost there, it's just not being borne by those friends. Um, so to think that there's a magical way to create housing. For two hundred thousand dollars, or one hundred thousand dollars. And that, and you know, that's before inflation was what it was. You know, before your one dollar now became, you needed five dollars to spend it, you know, things used to be five dollars, they're now ten dollars, um. I think that's important, though, that people clear, like, four hundred sixteen thousand dollars, we do make.
That's not, I, it, it, I wasn't, how would that not help because of town? Yeah, I need to say, I wasn't gonna say it was irrelevant, what I was gonna say is, that was not where I was headed with it, it's like, it's a balance. So we have some of the affordable housing, I never said in anything that I said before, in this possible annexation, that we put affordable housing in there. It's a balance. That we put affordable housing in there. It's a balance of different types of property. It's a balance, and I'm not trying to say that everybody who grew up here needs to stay here, or everybody who. Wants to downsize, who's been here for forty, thirty, fifty years or whatever, needs to stay here. I just, it's. It it, we can't keep just adding. Market rate housing is my point.
So. Build up to what you're saying, the the thing is, the way it's laid out now. It has all the earmarks of saying it's gonna be the most expensive single family homes in Dexter.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's not so much that it has to be a hundred thousand dollars. It's just. They're gonna be six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar houses. I mean, I just looked up, there's a lot that went up for sale in Boulder in on a, in a. West Ridge off Bridgeway. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So. Those, I mean, the land alone is gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The only question is, how much is the construction maybe on top of that? So. I think it's not so much. Do all the lots need to be three thousand square foot? Four bedroom, three bath, you know, with the walkout basement? Or is there a mix of housing that could be done? You know, the developer could say, yes, we're gonna take, you know. Let's say it's not forty five lots, say, let's say it's for eighty lots, let's say it's a hundred lots then, but you're gonna take sixty of them or fifty of them. And you're gonna make them smaller lots, and you're gonna put a thousand to twelve hundred square foot homes on. Which nobody builds anymore, right? Because they can't make five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars. But I mean, most of the housing, I don't know if it can be built or not. I've never looked at building, let's say, a bank or something like that. But I mean, at two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars a square foot, which you want house itself or an extra. Hundred twenty or a thousand to twelve hundred square foot is somewhere in the order of two hundred fifty, three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand. That ends up being within that attainable or. Area, that that's something that people prefer. Now, that being said, we could build and trying to your point that people can't find houses. This isn't gonna solve any housing crisis. These houses are all gonna sell, no matter what size they got. And that'll be, we'll be back to looking for housing. It, you know, it's, it'll matter to those eighty or however many families are there. But we will still have that same issue, and we talked about that. We can build houses for a long time and people buy.
Yeah, so um kind of like going back to what is important for me, um. I think that the. General thing that is giving me a thought about this plan and. Why I do like the phrase that is in there says as proposed, is that there is a lot of. Indiquity in the in the plan. It's a very. Oh, potentially a well, potentially this, potentially that, there is a lot of. Ideas. What without really seeing things that can bring those ideas to fruition and. Um. Without really thinking of, you know, there there's also the part for me that. The the proposed area, we know Mr. Latin has said that he. Is not intending to build it himself and he's gonna give it to a developer, so. That by itself means that things could change. So whether, so if we are proactive and. Putting something in place for that not to change, that's another thing, but. It's again yet another thing as proposed that there is. We are asked the way it is to do a lot of. A huge leap of faith in my opinion. So. As so. As others have also said, what are the things that we want to see and what are the priorities for us are important thing? I think for me is. If we have forty five acres of housing, I I do like the idea of seeing a little bit of mix. The same way that um or Michelle described it, um. Not too many houses, not like hundred level, you know, how the number of units, but what with with that forty five acre. The the housing options of thinking of what is possible, um. It's a good thing. So that's a. To me, a sustainable growth, and we have talked about sustainable growth, growth of what is, and not just to our waters, but what is to our roads? What is to our city, what is to our infrastructure in general, um and and all of that. So to me, that is a, that is a good. Thing, good thing and a priority. I do want the I, the the stuff. Ending, as as you mentioned, um. The other thing for me, and I know for a lot of people in. In that area is really in Dexter Crossing is very important, is that the construction trucks not go through. Um Dexter Crossing and finding a path um there that that brings construction from. Um. Not in Dexter Crossing for. For that property. And I and for. Many, many times, that is the first thing that people have brought up. When I came to Dexter Crossing, it was really at the end of building of Dexter Crossing in general. Um but for people that have lived in on Wellington Drive, people who. Um have lived in, not just even Wellington, but even the 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 ones proximity to it. Those trucks coming and going has been a nightmare. I know people who wanted to move as soon as they realized, oh, they have built, they're in a place that. They need to, like they see the trucks constantly. And even though that even at the end of the construction, there was ask of like. Some of the trucks not going through there, they still did, and it was creating a lot of issues. Even right now, as I have mentioned many times, there are many children on Wellington, especially as Wellington gets to. Carrington closer to Dexter and Arbor Road. Um, in those homes, there are many, many children and the the trucks, it just. It's a lot for that area. And thinking of building that many homes, it will take years, the same way Dexter Crossing took many years. Um, so that's where, that for me is is a priority to be included as part of those pending this stuff. Is just finding another way for the construction trucks to to go. Um and sorry, the the last thing is, um. Hmm, not just thinking about the well, but also thinking about. What else this can impact or how else can this impact the rest of our infr- infrastructure? And making sure that those are taken care of.
I know at one time somebody had brought up that possibly we need another road, you've been dealt with a park. I don't know if that's possible with the height, brother gas main, with train cell, with road, bigger roads already over it, and so with part of the road over the heart section. Um, if we did go this well, I mean, first of all. How can we make industrial park bigger if we don't utilize? What's behind it? Cause there, it, do we want it there? I'm not saying I want any of these things, but industrial park, when this. Well, it happens or whatever they do with the open space behind us, it's the biggest it's ever gonna get. Number two, if we want to build another well, build an industrial park, this might be a good time to do it, and then they get rid of the construction traffic again. It's that way, and that'd be another way. How important that is to all of you, I have no idea, but I remember it was brought up a month or two ago.
For me, that's another. I would say another. I don't know how to use, yeah, I would also like to see that, I should say, because I think that would help. The industrial park in general, so if we could get, if we could also get. I mean, it's not a property, right? But. Uh, that's another huge benefit I would see to the city, if we did get a an access. If we can work out to um bigger. Because there is still undeveloped land in the industrial park. And we already do have the problems with. The traffic all coming out of one access point. I mean, there's no downside to having another access point. For the city.
And also being the superintendent, um at the time when all this construction happened, when they built Dexter Crossing and throughout the whole process. When when, when we went in there to to K C L. Wanting to have all the roads at work, and there wasn't one person that wasn't complaining about the construction traffic. So it's, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, and I know a few people out there, they're not looking forward to if we did do this at San Diego.
I just wanna make one general comment about the. Distribution of housing type, I guess, within that development. I can appreciate how. I mean, I'm familiar with them, have seen many developments where you have the multi-family use or mixed use upfront. And then you open up a big family. With natural flow, you've got like the new traffic area, there's more people upfront. Any of the team. I guess, imbalanced, unconventional, less preferable to kind of let it out upfront. This kind of single families now, and then move back into something that's like that, because then you're taking. What normally is like the front of these types of developments, putting it in the rear, and then just increasing the amount of traffic that's going through to get there. Um. So to me, that doesn't seem like a natural flow of development. Uh, the other thing I wasn't quite able to find it, um. I know in our ribbon of the subdivision ordinance, we talked a bit about the street design, we came to the subdivision. And I'm kind of trying, I mean, looking at the illustration we see here, it's kind of like a continuation of that loop. I remember we did have more of a discussion about going towards this like traditional block design. You increase like the amount of people who are just gonna whip through and around the circle, and you're gonna have more opportunities for stopping. I don't know what, I I would need to, I guess, find where it talks about that in our subdivision ordinance, figure out where we ended on that. Uh, if in fact we ended where, I think we said maybe it's encouraged to do something that's not that, but it's not prohibited to do these bigger loops. I'm personally torn between, do you wanna just? Continue the aesthetic of of Dexter Crossing till it looks and feels more like that versus doing something different. Um, in the same way that having a bunch of either mixed use or the multiple family or other types of homes would feel imbalanced. It might also feel imbalanced to have, but suddenly go onto like a grid, so you'd like.
Just as a follow up to that, I personally would like to see similar home. Like side moving type, maybe on the Dexter Crossing. My my vision would be to have it be. Carry right through, like you didn't even know the difference.
Right.
But I currently think there's a.
True, um, so getting back to the well, I would say. Find it. Do the test wells, figure out whether or not, I mean, it's not a benefit to put down, there might be a well there. That's, that's not a benefit. So find a, find a, um, if there's, the other thing is pedestrian pathways. Forever in the day in Westridge, they said, and literally it was on. The little model they have in the, you know, of what the neighborhood was gonna look like. And a little arrow that pointed toward downtown and it said, future path to downtown. You know, at the time, late nineties or two thousand, there was no plan. There was none, no plan at all. Or no money allocated, there was nothing. It was just a builder saying, hey, there's gonna be a path over there. We did end up getting a path, but it wasn't what anybody thought it was gonna be at that whole time. We don't wanna be, we don't wanna have people moving in here and saying, there's gonna be some paths to where we're gonna go to someday. There needs to be some type of plan that's in in something that's concrete, I E. Bonds or constructing this stuff at a time, connecting up to whatever ZIOTownship has and bringing the paths over to them there at the end, something like that. Um. And then, um. I would second again on the construction traffic and. I know we're in a unique situation because the property owner happens to own the property outside of the annex area, but. I I mean, and I understand the construction tra- traffic, but I'm also worried about how much damage ends up being done to the residential roads that are there. And essentially, it's a long term bill for the city of Dexter that we have to go back and redo those roads. Because this truck's been open for six or even years or probably takes. But all those things together, I think all those things are concrete things that we talked about. But. I still think the biggest hurdle that they have to have is. Need to know what the rest of that's gonna look like. I mean. He really needs to talk to ZIOTownship and come to an agreement and say, this is what we're gonna do this, this is what we're gonna do this, you know. Submit the right submissions that we need so that, you know, for land preservation, you know, get a plan in for many hands. Those things need to go. I mean, right now. I I sincerely believe if we, the meeting tonight said, we're accepting the annexation. Another truck would just fall off the map. It would be like, don't care if many hands happen, don't care if the land preservation happens, doing the annexation. And I think that would be it. So maybe that's needing cynical. There is a bigger plan and he's a very. You know, believes that those things are things that are important to him, but. I don't think that any of those other developments are contingent upon. I don't think the annexation is contingent upon those other developments. Vice versa, I think is the case. I don't think many hands and the land preservation is gonna happen if the annexation does. So.
Um, he is proposing a right away that I think is larger than. What's in Dexter Crossing. And, you know, the the point about managing future street costs and something that thirty two foot road. I think our parents.
I have to go back. I don't know that, I don't think all of the. You know, the the right appointment is, um. I think it's sixty.
Yeah, not sixty six.
Not sixty six, and then and then a road for the industrial, so that everybody can, would be a minimum of seventy five. That's why it's a progress way, not the surface.
Yeah, if you were finished with that. Uh, I think the only other thing I was. Gonna say is that, um. You know, I'm remembering a time when. The organizers of Dexter Day were coming to council, like event during COVID times, tailing the COVID times, I'm not quite sure when. But they were kind of looking for feedback, like. Just tell us what you want us to do, we'll make it happen, and we'll, you know, and our response was kind of, well, that's sort of on the applicant to tell us. What you're gonna do and it's on us to review it, so. I'm torn here too. I mean, I appreciate that we're spending this time. I don't know how much more time I've spent on this. It, because it is not immediately clear to me what the back is, and so I think we share this feedback, um. But I'm also, I I feel like the onus is on the applicant to make a compelling case to city council and. Whatever data they think is gonna make us. Interested in the, it's their job to get that and share it with us. Um, you know, I. Everybody's busy. Many people are in many subcommittees, um. I just wanna be respectful of like our time, um, make sure that the applicant is. Is doing their fair share too, I guess. When it comes to making compelling case, I don't wanna make the case for the applicant. They don't, let it be, if he doesn't want, make me want to spend the time to do that. Well. I agree with that, but and. Um, I agree with that. I mean, we can't really get very far without the applicant. Doing whatever the applicant is gonna do. I do think that there's a a good discussion for us to have as a body to just talk about. What our thoughts are. Um. You know, I will, I do have to say, I'm, uh, the the. Comparison to Dexter Days is irks me just because. I spent a lot of time and effort. Talking to, well, not talking, but. Trying to work with the Dexter Days committee to come to a resolution in that moment. I I know I'm off topic, but. They never responded. I gave them what I thought. We as a body were saying, and there was no response to the time I put in for that. Uh, that's a side issue. The the last thing I wanna say is that if we're talking about cohesiveness. With Dexter Crossing. I, I'm gonna be stuck in the fact that it doesn't have to be all single family housing, just because Dexter Crossing is already bordered by. Condos that are. Top and bottom, you know, there's no reason why we can't have a mixture. And have it feel cohesive. It, it, I just, I'm not gonna, I'm all day long, not going to. Say it has to be seen when that limit is to be cohesive with Dexter Crossing.
And, um, if we can sum those. Um, how do we, how do we want to incorporate the notes that we had come down? With the committee lead of. I've got an urgent chairman of that. Do you wanna share them with Saya? We are doing that, it's good. I appreciate the fair listen. We do want to formalize them. There is a, there is a item on the agenda.
So, um. I mean, I'll edit it up into meeting minutes. Yeah, the council, so at the next meeting, you know, council will see. The draft, the draft that. Um, and be able to, to adopt those, and then to say. Set some of those minutes, uh, does that help with them, the applicant? And then there's anything that you think.
Yeah, I know, it's funny, you know. Also, the helpful thing that we have to remember that. You know, our job is to see if. I think we see if the benefits are at a high level. I mean, if we get, get past the high level benefits. I mean, eventually this would, you know, be going, and they would have to go through a site by approval process and, you know, this is a formal approval approval. We were, we were proven the past step of adding forty five acres per community. And then. You know, they would have to go through a process, a normal process. And, you know, the details like the road, the type of housing could change three times over in a year now. That point. I mean, whenever that might even be, there is no, the timing, there's no guarantee on timing or doing, going, would even occur if it got that far. I mean, if it got that far. So I think the, you know, when, when and if we take action on the formal annexation request. The seven of us have to be, have to be thinking about, are we overarching benefits? Way of doing this, so we, and we do what we didn't talk about, but I wanted to, um. I guess ask those in council, are there any questions that, that the people that are in the rule of the, our committee have for Saya? Like, I, I, well, well, we're doing, I mean, the reason we're meeting is we're meeting in partnership with them to try and figure out if there's some common roles that could be achieved here. Right? At least I think that was why we put the committee together, that was one of my personal roles, we're gonna need a. I personally would like to better understand where those requests that sit before the, um. Land preservation committees, if that's the right term. Let us state where those sit, when, when that. When, if decisions were made on. On, uh. Either this trip or the other, or the prior one. I gathered from, you know, I think the pack, our red ones, it seems to me that they would want a different configuration. Do they have ideas on what they would want for that configuration, where it could be? And I know they want better access to Baker. For parking, so we'll get to the trail, we'll get to the, that, that all makes sense to me. You know, maybe there's, maybe there's a different configuration. Than this, it will be more beneficial, I don't have any, that would be my question back. Well, I've got six fifty five, why don't we take a five minute break and then we'll, like the meeting at seven?